Okay. I will now call the workshop meeting of the Hazel Park Board of Education to order on this January 8th, 2024 at 5:00 PM. Can I have roll call, please?
Baldwin? Fortress? Hinton?
Here.
LeFromboyes?
Here.
Rete?
Here.
Rice?
Nagy?
Here. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move the Board of Education, except the agenda is written.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Only that I would suggest we move the January meeting up to A and then bond questions and student achievement. So we do our action item and then move on.
You want to do what?
Move the January meeting timeframe up to A and then bond questions to B and C, just so that we can take that business out of and then just focus on our presentations, if it would, if it would please the board.
So we're going to move the January meeting to A?
Yes.
And then the rest will be PC?
Yes, please.
Okay. We need a new motion on that for?
Just an agreement to amend that.
I move the Board of Education to approve the time change for the January meeting as presented.
Yeah, but we still, we first have to approve the agenda, so you guys have to agree to?
Oh, I thought we did that. No?
Okay, roll call, please.
Do you want me to amend?
Yes, please amend your motion if you would so choose to.
I will amend my motion to move C to A and then down. A to B, B to C, and then approve it.
Do I have the supports still?
Support.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Rete?
Yes.
LeFromboyes?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes. Anybody wishing to speak in public discussion? Nobody running up here, we'll close public discussion. Next, we'll go on to new business. And we will go with the January meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the January meeting, please?
Okay, now I move to the Board of Education to approve the time change in the January meeting as presented.
Do I have support? Discussion, please.
Yes, so thank you very much. We had discussion at the last meeting, a request to change it to seven. And so after some conversation, Mr. Nagy requested that I move that to seven o'clock and we're asking for your approval for the next meeting to be at seven.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
LeFromboyes?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes. Okay, next we have the bond questions.
Great, so I'm going to turn it over to Jason and John Davids to talk about the next steps in the bond and I may interrupt him, Jason, as he's talking a little bit, but I think it'll be fairly straightforward. He'll give you a chance to ask any questions you may still have about the next step in the bond process. Mr. Zernas?
Good evening. So we did receive word on Friday that the state did approve the pre-qualification application. And so therefore, I haven't seen the documentation yet. I know it's gone back and forth between architects and back to the state again. But again, it was approved and no revisions could be made, from my understanding. So what that leads us to is on our January 22nd meeting, we would be presenting to the Board ballot language to be added to the upcoming election. And what you see before you on the screen is the verbiage that would be the proposed ballot language. This language is pretty much cookie cutter to what you would see in most other districts and when they're going out for bond millage. The one thing that is unique about this one is the first line, construction, constructing, equipping, and furnishing a new school building. Most of the other items are, you know, all right in line with the school code and the finance code, indicating, you know, what's going to be added upon. But again, when we're doing something like building a new building, they explicitly state that in the final.
Yeah, I'm not the attorney on this, but I know that the language is always fairly general so that it doesn't hamstring you guys because the state wants to know that you're building the right amount of square footage and budgeting the right amount of money. But when it comes down to the fine details of exactly what they look like, they don't want to be in that game. So that's why they use language like furnishing and equipping a new school, not specifically exactly what that school looks like or renovations. And then we include language like playgrounds. So playgrounds, it could mean you put one swing set in at a building. It could mean you spend $8 million on playgrounds. It's just kind of generic language to let the public know what you're doing in general terms. And then once the bond passes, then we're going to get down to the, you know, to the nitty gritty and decide exactly which dollars go where on the projects.
So, and this just allows us to have a way in developing and designing if approved by the Board. And is there any questions or concerns with the language that you would see presented to you in the next board?
Well, and this is all the next step is. It's just simply moving the language for the ballot and then we would send it to the county by February 13th, or go before then, to get that on the ballot in order for the community to be able to vote to be specific about the students' needs. We are recording this meeting for the community.
I have a question. So if we decide not to do something on there, like say, you know, after all the public discussion and people commenting to us, that it comes back to the Board and they decide not to do something, do we have to, does it have to be changed? I mean, how do you do that?
If there's a, if there's a material change or a material scope change, then you would request approval from the state, from my understanding. And so if you were, if you wanted to build a second building or do something like that's very out of the ordinary, I mean, most of the stuff that's on here right now is exactly what we're doing. I mean, if you look at the last four words, developing, improving, improving sites, that really encompasses everything that we're going to be doing in the buildings. The other stuff, playgrounds, play fields, facilities, I mean, it's, there's a lot of generic talk in here. But if we go out and we are, again, if we deviate from the list of items that are in our pre-Q application, then we need to get approval from the Treasury to say, hey, this is what we said we were going to do. We are, we are going to deviate from this. It still fits within the, I mean, everything that we're going to do is going to fit within the confines.
We can, but we can do that.
And I want to confirm that we'll be doing it a series at a time. Correct?
And again, the projects, we've laid out projects to say here's, they're going to occur in series one, series two, and series three. That doesn't mean we don't have the discretion to move them between series, increase the scope or decrease.
Yeah, and I'm, things almost always in a bond, a multiple series bond, things almost always move from series to series because you find out you're going to get a better deal to bid roofs next year than you would in four years or vice versa. So we typically, you know, the reason this is fairly generic is so you can have that latitude to move things around. But, but like Jason said, if you made a major change, like you weren't going to do anything for a new building or you're going to do two new buildings, you would need to write a letter to the state. And from what I've seen, they've always approved those letters. I've had clients write letters lots of times saying, we didn't include fencing, but we want to fence in this field. Or we want to do new bleachers at the football field that wasn't listed. We'd like to do that. And the state, in my experience, has always approved that.
And in my discussions with other business directors right now, I think what we've been, what we've been seeing in the last, say, three years is that we are not increasing our scopes. We're actually decreasing our scopes because the cost of the projects have been so high. From, you know, when?
Is the percent proficient? That's a real positive, especially for our third graders. Our third graders prior to the pandemic consistently, we would get up there K1, 2, and then we'd see a decrease in third grade. But now what we're seeing is us maintaining over time. So for me, I was very excited about seeing this. I sort of knew that this data was there, but I hadn't seen it nested with the other Oakland County school districts. And this is truly a celebration for Hazel Park and all the work that we are doing. Yes, we have some more work to do, but what we're doing is making a difference. And so that really is from 2019 to 2023. The next slide is from spring 2022 to 2023. And please keep in mind, this is third grade only. If we added some of our other grades, it actually would look a little bit different and that change might have been a little bit bigger. But this is third grade proficiency only. The ISD chose to look at that because of the focus on making sure all of our students are reading at a proficient level by third grade. What this graph shows is the difference between 2022 and 2023. And once again, you see that while we didn't increase here, it was just about flat. I believe it was like .1 or .2 percent difference. I think it was .14 as a calculation was. But once again, while we would certainly want our increasing in proficiency rates higher than this, this is a big celebration among Oakland County districts. And so that was really the first graph we wanted to show you. This came out late fall, so we cannot bring this to you in the fall when I did the presentation. The next set of slides is really focused on the school index scores. The state of Michigan releases the school index scores and I know some of you noted that the school grades came out. I'm going to talk about school grades first. That legislation is no longer in place. Governor Whitmer finally removed it. It was a very confusing way that really made a pretty complex look at growth in a kind of a simple format. And you'll notice between, when we talk a little bit about the school index scores, this is the last year the school grades will be released. So that information, it's really, you know, it's there, but we're really kind of putting that on the side because that really didn't represent the growth and the change that we noted in Hazel Park. If you flip over to the school index scores, the school index scores really represent a balanced look at a school district because the school index score is really comprised of a number of different things. One of them is student growth and you see that that is 34% of the total school index score that we get. Student proficiency is the next highest at 29%. And then school quality or student success and things such as, do we have access to libraries? I believe chronic absentee is in there, absenteeism attendance is in there. Access to advanced coursework. So that third row, school quality or student success, really is comprised of a number of different pieces. And so you can see it goes down in percentage of how much goes into that final number. So what I did was I really looked back, same types of things, and looked at 2019, which was pre-pandemic, and compared it to 2022, which really was just coming back out of the pandemic, and then what we did last year in 2023. And this is the change. And so when you look at that, basically what those numbers represent on this slide is overall school index scores. So basically you get an overall number. And you can see in every single one of the schools, a significant increase in a really short amount of time. Because remember, 2020, 2021, very disrupted learning, where we know that was a struggle for kids learning. When they got back into our environments, our wonderful, high-quality teaching environments in 2022, you see we started to put things together. That is also the year that we added our ARC reading resource and had that really laser focus on reading. And you can see we made a big increase. In some of these, you know, basically when you look at the change in Hoover, if you look at percentage-wise, I think it was like 136% increase. Those are significant numbers that everybody in this school district should celebrate. The next slide right here is our growth score. So this is just focused only on academic growth. The previous slide was the overall score that was comprised of all those different items. This is really our overall growth score. And again, what a celebration to see schools go from 15.27 up to a growth score of 93.65. Schools going from 39.2 up to 98.4. These scores really represent the work that's going on in Hazel Park School District and it represents the growth and the efforts that have been put in in many areas, not just literacy, but literacy is that primary piece that we've really been focusing on, that we're changing and having a positive increase. We're going to transition into some other data in a minute, but does anyone on the Board have any questions about the two slides that I shared already or four slides that I shared?
How do they measure this growth?
The end, the growth. The growth. So they are using the growth. When we get, so let me kind of step back. When we get M-Step scores, we get performance level and that's like not proficient, proficient, partially, or partially proficient, proficient, advanced. We also get a growth score. And what they do is they take, they look at students' growth or change over time. So this score represents the increase in growth. The reason why this is important is because that increase in growth, the higher it goes, means we are doing more and more and more to show, to close the gap for students. So that's really what that represents. It's not the performance level. It is the growth that students are making over time. This also represents students that have been in our district over time because again, they're comparing the growth of students in 2019 to growth of students of 2023. So there's a pretty complex formula that goes into calculating this, that the state does. We have all that information. It's a pretty complex formula, but basically what they're doing is they're taking your literacy scores and looking at the growth, and they're taking your math scores and looking at the growth. And that's what this score is comprised of.
So an individual, like a whole bunch, so was it following a cohort or it's just in general?
This is just in general. Yes, just in general. Now, they would be broken down further, but this, this number represents in general. And remember, back to those couple of middle years between 2020 and 2022, that was really significantly disrupted. So to see an increase in 2023 such as this is a pretty significant increase. Any other questions before I move on?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand. The first one is county rankings, 2019 to 23, we did well. And then the next one, that's a one-year ranking, we've, it looks like we did bad.
Well, it's, it was pretty flat. I could, I think it was actually a .14, so it was pretty flat. So we didn't show a big increase in our third graders from 2022 to 23. No, we did not see that big increase. And those are proficiency. Improficiency. Yes. Yes, im proficiency. What we did see was a big change from 2019 to 2023. And so I think the, the point of this graph is significant because, I mean, if you think about the districts that are nested in Oakland County, we've got about 13, 14, 15 of them that actually reduced the percent proficient from 2022 to 2023. We're flat, we didn't increase. We want to be over there, but I think we're going to be there this next year, you know, because we were just really pulling in a new resource. And I think it's really important to remember, and I think I've talked about this before, that when you implement any change, deep change, like we were trying to and still are trying to make, it takes at least three to five years for a big, significant change to happen. And so this is really just third graders in 2022 and third graders in 2023. It is not cohort.
Dr. Domich, can I interrupt for just a minute?
Absolutely.
Dr. Domich and I were reflecting this morning in our, our morning meeting about the fact that I was online and some information came to me through Google from Illinois. And Illinois is tracking this kind of information as well because across the country, there's significant reduction in growth for students, not only in math, but in ELA as well. And so what we're trying to share with you is that while other school districts around us are struggling to get the proficiency, we are moving. And, and, and that is a celebration. I mean, we've got to look at those things that are really working well for us. And we, the curriculum, the work that our teachers and staff, which is a tremendous amount of work, the tremendous professional development is moving Hazel Park forward. And so that is exciting. You, you have to look at that. It's just great.
It, it really is positive. And I think, you know, it's really hard not to look at, you know, when, when data is presented and, and we know that they do this, you know, we get the data, there's one thing that we look at. And we certainly, I think I said this in the fall, we want to continue to see our proficiency rates move up and we will be. But you can't forget to look at where the change is happening because sometimes that tells a huge story too. And these next slides are really going to illuminate that a little bit more. So if we go here, this information was shared in a high-level way in the fall. We really felt it important to come back and revisit this because this tells a really important story. And I'll go through this, these slides slowly and kind of talk about what they are so you can understand what the goal is here. And I specifically chose to put the slides talking about not proficient first because we always go to that proficient place and, and we're moving and we're going to continue to move. But the story that we want to make sure people are aware is that we're changing huge gaps in learning from the pandemic of kids really missing two, two and a half years of school to, on a state-level assessment. This is not eye-ready, this is a state-level assessment and all of you know the rigor of that state-level assessment, to really reduce the percentage of students that are in those not proficient categories. So basically what you're seeing here is that I looked at Hazel Park from 2022, and this is not 2019, this is 2022 to 2023. And I looked at the change in percentage, and that's, the state published that as well, just isn't something that people talk a lot about. So basically what this showing is, they did the same thing. The state said, where were students in 2022 and where were students in 2023? And then they published the change or the increase or decrease in the percent proficient or not proficient. So this graph is basically showing the change in not proficiency, which is really a reduction. If you look at that, that in third grade, we had approximately 6% fewer students in the not proficient category in 2023 as compared to 2022. The state really had no change. So across the state, when they compared the performance of third graders in 2022 and third graders in 2023, there was essentially no change. We reduced that percentage by 6%. Then we get up to fourth grade and you're going to see a couple of things with our fourth graders. Once again, we significantly exceeded where the state was. When we compared our fourth graders in 2022 to the percentage of not proficient in 2023, we reduced that number by 10%. When you're looking at a grade level of kids, that's a chunk of kids that we reduced that on. And you can see that pattern carries on up into fifth and eighth grade. Basically what you see is that Hazel Park, in terms of our changing or reducing the percentage of students that were not proficient, outperformed the state in grades three, four, five, and eight, and not by a little amount. Essentially, when you look at across the state, their changes were pretty flat. Really, when I show you all of the data, there were some peaks across the state, but essentially very flat.
Dr. Domich, can I just, for the community that's looking, because I, I know everybody gets it and will be celebrating this to really talk about the great work that's happening in the curriculum department, but it's counterintuitive, this graph is, right?
It is counterintuitive, yes.
Because you got to think the opposite way, that the fact that when your line is below, that's a celebration versus a line above. Because a line above would be more kids are failing. Here it shows less kids are failing.
Yes. And over to the right, I tried to kind of say that, on this graph, below the midline is actually positive growth because we're reducing the percentage of students. Thank you for making that clarification. And then we get up into our PSAT and SAT. And essentially you can see for our ninth graders, significant change. So we had 12.9% fewer students in the not proficient. In PSAT terms, it's not meeting the benchmark, that's the term they use. But just to keep the consistency, again, I kept with not proficient. Whereas when we look at the state, there really wasn't any change at all. There was actually a little point too, there was a little increase, you know, of more students actually not proficient. You can see we did not do as much in our SAT, but there was a slight difference between the percentage reduction in the not proficient for SAT in Hazel Park as opposed to the state.
Dr. Domich, and those students did participate in ARC last year in the eighth grade, correct?
Yes. No, these students did not.
The ninth graders?
The ninth graders.
Right. The seniors did not, but the ninth graders did.
Yes, and, yes.
Yes.
So then when we go, this is, this is now flipping it up to proficient. And so you can see, again, essentially across the state in all grades, ELA change was flat. There really is not, when you look at something like negative .01 or .8, that's really not much of a change. And we can see, while we didn't have a whole lot of change in ours as well, we do have fourth grade and you'll notice, you'll see a little bit of a, a change in our fourth graders. And I'm going to take you back to think, we've been talking, every year we're seeing more change. You know, first of all, many years ago, it was K1 always did better. Then a couple of years later, we kept seeing that change in K1, 2. Now we're seeing K1, 2, 3, and then this past year, we're seeing that move up into our fourth graders. And so this, again, we want that above the line because this is? And so this, again, we want that above the line, because this is the increase in percent Flipping on to our PSAT and SAT, let me kind of talk about why the numbers for ninth grade is, are the same. So essentially, if you're either, with the ninth grade scores, the way they publish them, it's either you're not meeting or you're meeting. So essentially, it was the same. We increased by 12.9%, or we reduced the percentage by 12.9%. That flips up into, we also increased that, because there aren't four different categories like M-Step. But once again, ninth graders continuing to grow. We saw that pattern last year as well, and the increase this year was even a little bit more. Flipping over into math, uh, we know, uh, really countrywide, and I think actually that was what Dr. Croupi mentioned this morning, that Illinois was looking at their math scores across the country, and I'm just going to say probably worldwide. We know that that pandemic learning environment significantly impacted math much more than it did for reading and writing. And so once again, you can see, we've got some change in our third graders. We reduced the percentage of students that were not proficient by 2.3%. We pop up into our fourth graders again. That is a significant change. We reduced the percentage of fourth grade students not proficient by 14%. Compare that to about 2% by the state. So once again, you can see there are some shining stars in what we're doing in terms of, um, the work in our schools. And I think this is really important. I think I put in there, it's very notable. We know math is a struggle. When we've reduced the percentage of students in fourth grade by 14% among a topic or subject area that people are struggling with across the country, that is a big celebration. This is not proficient in PSAT and SAT. Again, it's not as significant as reading, but we did see there are ninth graders, again, outperformed, when I say outperformed, remember I'm talking about changes in proficiency, a reduction in the percent of students that were not proficient by 5%. SAT, a little bit less, but we did reduce by about 2%. We are now moving into the proficient piece. So if you notice here, this is our third, fourth, fifth, and the seventh, really made some big changes. Look again, and this is math, again, I'm going to keep saying that, people struggling with math, but there was a big change in terms of the percentage of students that were And the final piece really is, um, on the PSAT. And this is where we really saw the most change, that our ninth graders had 5% more, 5.65, and a half percent more compared from 22 to 23 at a proficient level. So we really wanted to make sure that we brought that information to you, because, as I said, when you look at that aggregate data, which we did in the fall, this information was discussed, but there wasn't a close-in look at it. It's important for us to close and look at this, because it not only means that we're moving kids, but it also means that as a system, what we're doing is making a difference. So we need to continue on the pathway and the trajectory we're on to really hone in, continue to grow our professional learning around that, continue to grow the efficacy of that, and continue to lean into what we are doing, because it's making a difference. Just a few more slides here. I know everybody really wants to get to the game. I think I got a few warnings when I came up here, um, to kind of go through a little...
They have plenty of time, Dr. Domich, hour and a half.
To be clear and concise, um, so this right here is something that I wanted to show you. You know, we always want to talk about, um, the value of staying in Hazel Park School District over time. It's a little tricky out, to be honest with you, looking at anything before the pandemic, because when you're taking two years, maybe two and a half years, it was really impacted, it's really not a good assessment to say what was going on in 2016, 2017 with a cohort of students, when they had this big gap in their learning. So what I did do was I just looked at our ELA, our iReady scores. And what this represents is two years, it scores from 2022 and square, scores from 2023. And when I looked at students in grades one through seven, and I really focused on one through seven, because obviously our kindergartens, kindergarteners won't be there for two years, and our eighth graders are moving up into the high school and aren't taking that. So that's why you only see grades one through seven. And you can see that both in tier one, and just for all of you in the audience, tier one is typically referred to as being at grade level or above. And so what you notice is that as an aggregate, in grades one through seven, 9% more, if, if a student, if students were in our district, a minimum of two years, remember now, we're just talking about two years. We're not talking about students that have been here for multiple years. It would have looked differently, but again, going back, adding that pandemic data is really not a good way to think about data. We increased that by, there are 9% more students are in that tier one level. On the flip side, when we go to tier three, and again, once again, tier three is for students that are having some sort of a learning difficulty, or need some more support for us to live into their potential, we see 10% fewer students when we compare students that have been here for at least two years versus students that were only here for one year. That same, almost identical pattern happened in math as well. So when we're even looking at as little as two years of time of the value of being in Hazel Park School District over time, we can see a big change. And remember, 10% of all the students in grades one through seven is a significant number of students. The very next slide is actually...
Sorry, I have a quick question. This is the impact of kids that are in the two or more years?
Mm-hmm. It, up, two years.
But then you said something about...
Well, two or more, yes, there are some two or more, yes. We do, we did include some that are two or more years, but it's representing two years of data, not going back to multiple years of data.
So it's two years of data, so I, so you said, then you said something about one year, and I don't see one year up there, so I was like...
That was the kindergarteners would not be in there, because they've only been here for one year.
Yes, yes. And so basically, well, basically what this is saying is, so let me kind of step back and re-explain it. Thank you for asking that question. So what I did was I compared students that were here one year, that would just be 2023, and then I compared that group of students to students that have been here for at least two years, two or more. I mean, in some cases, it's two or more, because if it's a seventh grader, but this is two years of data. And so what you don't see represented up here is, I don't have any data up there about students that were only one year. I'm just showing that for students that were here two years, at least two years, compared to students that were only here one year, which is last year, 10% more of that group of students is showing proficiency at tier one, and that means at or above grade level. So it's really just taking, I've got this pile of kids that were only here one year, and I looked at them, compared to the students that were here two or more years. And what was noted in those two different groups is that about 10% more were in tier one, and 10% more were in tier three.
That was the one year that I was questioning. Okay. So these are comparing to one-year students?
Yes.
It just doesn't say that on the slide, so it's... Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then this slide is not in your presentation. That was very intentional. What this is, is something called the ERLA Assessment. ERLA is the assessment portal that we use with the ARC reading. The reason that I did not put it in the packet is this is very formative assessment data. This data kind of morphs and changed, because, um, teachers are entering and changing and updating it all the time. So it would not be appropriate to list this out as, as anything that's static necessarily, or that's end-of-year data, at, at the end of the year. If it were different, it were end of the year, I would be able to do this. But because this is very formative, it's not a summative type of thing, I want to talk about it, but I'm not going to publish it publicly, because that wouldn't be appropriate, given the source of data. But what this basically is, is that, uh, this is showing some trends. This is our mid-year information right now. And this is basically showing, again, tier three, and I see a typo. I thought I caught all my typos. Um, it shouldn't say percent at tier one emergency, it should say percent at tier one on the right, at, at, or above. I will make sure that's up, excuse me, updated before we get that out to Jamie to publish. And so once again, you're seeing the same pattern. So if we look at students in K2, this was from mid-year of 2022, so this is comparing last year again, to mid-year of 2023. Over on the left, I'm on the left graph right now, basically you're going to see that mid-year last year, 48% of our kindergarteners were in tier three. And again, tier three is not, is below where we want them to be. Forty compared to this year, 33%. So we can already see, in that short amount of time of implementing the reading resource and all of the really big improvements in our foundational skills instruction and the professional learning, we've got about 15% fewer kindergarteners not proficient this year as compared to last year. And you can see that pattern carried over at all the grade levels. In grades three through eight, at this time last year, we had 38% in tier three. This time this year, or at this time this year, we had 30%. In grades six through eight, last year, we had about 48% not proficient at this time of the year. This year, we have 37% not proficient. Again, we're seeing a lot of big changes. We will be going into, in the next two weeks, we will be going into iReady Assessment. We, of course, will bring that back to the board when, uh, when and if the board requests that, and that is that more norm-referenced data that we can look at. We are confident that we're going to see a change in that, with all the positives that we're hearing from the schools. Flipping over to the right side of the graph, this is basically an increase in the percent of students at or above grade level. So last year, at this time, in kindergarten, we had 33.8% at or above grade level. This year, same time of the year, in January, we're at 45% proficiency. You can see what the patterns are, you know, essentially, we're continuing to increase. We did not have as much of an increase in grades six through eight, but I want to make sure I note and underline something about this data, and that's why it's not in there. The way this tool works is teachers are entering data all the time, it's very fluid. And potentially, we have teachers that maybe before the break, just didn't enter some of the data into this system, and so it would not show that students have grown or anything like that. It doesn't mean that students haven't grown. It's just the nature of what this data is. The purpose for showing you this was to show that we're continuing to trend in the right direction with a reduction in the percent of students that are at tier three and an increase in the percent of students that are at tier one. Any questions before I go into the final couple of slides?
I have a question of how many, it's comparison to Michigan schools. How many, the improvement's nice to see, but how many schools in Michigan are we talking about that didn't make, I mean, they just kind of leveled out?
I, I'm not, I'm not even sure I could, you know, I don't, I don't know if the state publishes that, but, I mean, that's all the schools in the state, which I'm not even, I can't even guess how many schools are in the state. I certainly could look to see if we could get that data, to see the number of schools that data is based on.
It's so, I, I've read how many schools in the state, I just don't recall. I want to say it was like 1,500. I mean, it's a lot.
It is, it is a lot, yeah. Any other questions? So this one, I'm not really going to read the whole thing to you. Hopefully, um, it'll be published, and hopefully all of you are reading it. But it really talks about what we need to think around a data story. Because, you know, essentially, these numbers have a story behind them. And the story that we really need to lean into is that as a school district, we made some concerted decisions, really significant concerted efforts, from our board, all the way down to our teachers, to instructional coaches, to everybody in the district, to make a difference for students, and we're seeing that. That's the story that we need to tell around our data. We need to celebrate the fact that we've taken students that came out of pandemic learning, and we're reducing the percent of students that are not proficient at a rate higher than some of our, many of our Oakland County counterparts. It's really shown up in our M-Step scores, it's also shown up in our index scores. And what we really need to do is take this information and think about how this really informs what we're doing next, the path that we need to go on, and really the journey that we're going to take, to really make this a future-focused school district that continues to look at each student as an individual, address their needs, help all students flourish, and really focus on educational excellence and equity. So I hope when you walk away from this, those are some of the things that you're gleaning from this. We know we have more work to do. We are prepared, we are ready, we know what we need to do. We're seeing what we're doing is making a difference, and we know what things are not working, and we change those things. And the final thing I wanted to leave was, was really just some of those big things about YHP. And I think this is really, really important for us as a district. Certainly, we've got some real big celebrations in some of the data, but there's a number of pieces about, and, you know, elements of Hazel Park that really, we need to celebrate and we need to talk more about. And that really is that strong, community-driven schools and high levels of wraparound support. Hazel Park Junior Vikings and increased after-school programming, really starting to build the foundation for full-service community school districts. I will tell you, now that we're in the third year of the work at United Oaks, there are some things that we're seeing that are definitely different than the other schools. One of them being their absenteeism rate. When we look at, and we, we have a chronic absenteeism task force, and when we look at the data, United Oaks, the percentage of students that were chronically absent was about 10 to 12% less than any of our schools in the district. Certainly and foremost, strong staff. I think I skipped one, but I think this is important, I can't say it enough, around the staff members that work here, from the pair professionals to the maintenance, the custodial, all the way up to our administrators' central office and building. It's a really tight, really strong, high-quality group of staff members. We all know this is a very community, family-focused district with an amazing supportive community. And then some of the other things that are kind, coming down the pike that make us unique, a future early-middle college program, thankfully and wonderfully, all of you voted to push that forward for our application. If we get approved, which I think we have a really high chance of being approved, we would be one of seven districts in Oakland County that hosts their own EMC. Now let me be clear on that, because I never want something to be communicated differently. There is something called Oakland Early College, it's housed on the campus of OCC. Many Oakland County districts do send their kids there. So there is another, that's some called, that's called an early college site, but there are only six other districts in Oakland County that have a program that's really specialized and focused on the needs and the goals of their districts. I am hopeful, but strongly believe that we will get that application pushed through, and we will launch our own early-middle college next year. Of course, we can't say enough about the Promise Zone. That opportunity is just such an amazing opportunity for all students that are in this community that needs to be, and usually is celebrated from the rooftop. And then the final piece, to really talk about some unique things, are our unique CTE and dual enrollment options. You know, Firefighters Academy, we've said this before, it is the only one. They were the only school district doing that. Um, there are some other things coming down the pike that we can't really talk about yet, because they're not fully in place, but, uh, OCC came to Hazel Park first to have those conversations, not another district, they came to Hazel Park. And then, of course, we know our welding program is very unique, and our Chrysler School-to-Work program, and there's another program, it's called NAF, it's called, it's their, they're, it's like a dual enrollment program. That's something that we got a grant for, and we're getting up and running. It's all under this umbrella of dual enrollment, giving our kids opportunities to have college credit and broaden their horizons beyond, you know, while they're in high school, to really kind of set them up and position themselves for success. So that is the end of my presentation. Uh, thank you for listening. What questions might you have for me?
Well, while you're thinking, I guess I would just say, our staff has to be commended over and over again for the deep learning and deep work that they're doing. Our focus is hopefully to bring to you a suggestion to move ARC forward to the 10th grade, given the progress that we're seeing, uh, to continue to move that forward. But, uh, we're really proud of just the incredible efforts, coaches. Remember, this data is with one less MTSS teacher in the elementary schools, and more MTSS in the junior high and high school, and so we just are excited to look forward to the continued great progress. And thank you, Dr. Domich and your team, for putting this together and the continued strong... And thank you, Dr. Dolmetsch, and your team for putting this together and the continued strong work in our curriculum department.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Dr. Dolmetsch, I definitely enjoyed the presentation. All right, next we're open for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak for a second time? Seeing none, we'll move to board member and administrative comments. Who wants to go first, Monica?
I'm actually going to laugh a little because I was going to thank Dr. Dolmetsch, too, and my word was for deep diving into things. And you use that word a lot, so that's kind of funny. But seriously, thank you because you always make sure that our students have the curriculum that they need or that they're going to need. And I love that, I love seeing growth or even at least just staying where we are, so thank you for all of that. Good luck to our basketball team tonight, they're over at East Point, the boys, and go Blue.
Go ahead, Debbie.
I just was going to thank everybody that presented and, again, being patient with me and answering my questions. And that's it. I hope everybody had a great holiday vacation.
All right, Bev.
Nice to get back in the groove with a short meeting. Been out of town, so this, this was nice. I have a piece of good news. I think everybody would like to hear that Chad Carr, a past Hazel Park student, I don't know how old Chad is now, maybe 30? He's being sworn in tonight as a sergeant of the fire department in Ferndale. And he was in my Head Start class when he was four, and Mom's been in touch with me all these years. And I just think that's so exciting to hear about Chad. And when he was at the high school, he went to the Rainforest with Mr. Gallant and took students for a couple of years. And I thought maybe Kevin might hear tonight that, about Chad's success because I know people do watch and teachers watch and whatever. But anyway, I think that's just, that's fabulous, Hazel Park has had a lot of success. And that's it, thank you for coming out and answering questions, and Dr. Dolmetsch for your report. There's a lot in there, it's a lot of time, so thank you.
Yes, Stu, I hope people are watching this evening to just post that Gleaners is tomorrow. That is going to be tomorrow at 11 o'clock, and so come on out. We're a little concerned with the change of the time, but we hope that we've been able to communicate that out to everyone. And, and true, there's, there was a lot of sad news, passing of Leo Davids, of Matt Blitsky over the break, and the loss of Marion Genopoulos, former superintendent of Lake Orion. But in all of that, there was a lot of wonderful news, too, because I was too able to connect with the Hazel Park community and hear the wonderful things that are happening. We have someone becoming orthodontist, and, you know, people becoming nurses and doctors, and there's great things that happen through Hazel Park. So we're a sleeper community, people don't get it, and how wonderful everybody is. I'm going to say it, go Blue, tonight. So I, I too will be watching the game, and you got to root for that Michigan team.
All right, thank you, John, for being here tonight. You going to be here tomorrow?
Well, we haven't talked to him about tomorrow, so.
Oh, okay. All right. And then thank you, Dr. Dolmetsch, for your presentation, it was definitely very informative, I really enjoyed that. And happy new year to everybody.
Can I, can we talk about tomorrow night? We do have a community meeting about the bond where community members can come and talk. There'll be a letter that'll be coming out later this evening from Chuck and from myself, just letting them know about those dates, as well as letting them know about the change of the regular board meeting.
All right, and that's all I have to say, so can we get a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Support.
Support, support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, six, oh, not even six o'clock, wow.